Do I do it?
I'm talking to you. I'm not talking to this guy.
Okay, that's off. That's all right down.
Oh, it's just different. Okay, perfect. All right, at this time, oh, he's still out there. Well, we'll start without him. Ah, no, we gotta make sure Zoom is on.
Packers are on at 7:20. Hurry up.
I'm just waiting for Ryan. Just wanna make sure we're rolling for Zoom.
We're good.
All right, at this time, we'll call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee DeBoer?
Here.
Trutchel?
Here.
Piper?
Here.
Walsh-Lager?
Here.
Paulquist?
Here.
A trustee Connor, are you on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm on Zoom.
All right, thank you, and President Fannerstill?
Here.
If you'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, it'll be led by trustee Connor. I'm sorry, it'll be led by trustee Trutchel. I'm sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in heaven, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Trutchel got so lucky to do the Pledge of Allegiance near Veterans Day. Tom, I am very sorry for saying the wrong name at first. Rick was just coming on and I, anyway, sorry about that, but God bless America. So, now we have public comments. For anybody that would like to speak at public comment, please step towards the podium, state your name and your address, and the floor will be yours.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Laflamme, and for the last 12 years, I've lived at 1017 Woods Drive in the River Reserve subdivision of Heartland. I'm here tonight to urge you to allocate funds to improve the roadways around River Reserve. I'm grateful for the newly added crosswalk at Lindenwood and Maple, as well as the reduced speed limits around the intersection of Maple and KE. Adding rectangular rapid flashing beacons, RRFBs, to the intersection of Lindenwood and Maple is the next step to improve safety for Heartland residents. RRFBs consist of two rectangular shaped yellow lights that flash with alternating frequency when activated by pedestrians. Every day, many residents cross Maple Avenue at Lindenwood, and hundreds of vehicles drive through the intersection. Crossing Maple at Lindenwood is common for kids going to school and residents going to neighborhoods on either side of Maple. I encourage anyone who hasn't tried to cross the wide roadway on foot to do so. If you're brave, I encourage you to try crossing with a child, a stroller, or someone with limited mobility. Despite the crosswalk and current signs, many drivers don't stop, and pedestrians are forced to move quickly, faster than some are able, or wait for an extended amount of time to cross. Nixon Park posts a list of walking paths in Heartland and lists River Reserve our paved walking path as a destination, so let's help residents get there safely. Distracted driving is a known problem. Maple Avenue is a gateway to village stores, schools, parks, the library, and a grocery store. Additionally, many work trucks and drivers unfamiliar with our roadways may not be aware of the crosswalk at Lindenwood. With so much activity at this intersection, more needs to be done to keep people safe. Flashing lights are proven to get drivers' attention. Driver yield rates increase substantially and crashes are reduced significantly when rectangular rapid flashing beacons are present. Adding RRFBs to this intersection and considering adding safety enhancements to other roadways in our area is proactive and makes Heartland a better community. Please consider a resolution to move forward on a vote to add one RRFB at Lindenwood and Maple in 2026 and greatly improve safety around Heartland.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak in public comments?
Okay, hi, I'm Melissa Katie, and I live at 1001 River Reserve Drive, and I came in front of you guys on April 14th, and I told you about how my daughter Madeline was crossing that intersection, and she almost got hit by a car, and all, like, the middle school kids on the bus, like, saw it happen and came up to my son and said, "Your sister almost got killed today." And she goes to South and he goes to North Shore, so I came in front of you guys asking about this in April, and so I, I'm, like, so happy that they reduced the speed to 35, but I can tell you, just a few days ago, we, like, I was trying to ride my bike back with her to take her back to South, and, like, just nobody stops. We're just standing there, they go really fast, they don't, you know what I mean? So, it's just, it's, I like, I wanna say that, in a case where you might think, like, it's driver error, or distracted driving, or it's speeding, or something like that, I would just say, like, it doesn't really matter what the cause is if the end thing is that, like, a kid gets hurt, or an elder, or something. And the truth is that people just don't see that intersection, even with those flags, and if we can allocate budgets for that, just to keep that safe, 'cause, like, when my daughter leaves for school, like, I really do kinda feel like a bad parent if I let her, like, cross at that crosswalk by herself. I mean, that's just, like, how I, how I feel, so, anyway. And then, I just wanna say that we do, like, maintain that pathway, and the community does use it, so many people walk on our pathway, and having people to be able to access it safely is important for the larger community of Heartland, not just River Reserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak in public comment? Sir?
Sir?
Good evening, everyone. Trevor DeBoer, 608 Oxford Drive. I'm up here, I just wanted to formally thank the board and the Village of Heartland for honoring our Heartland heroes. We have a bunch of kids that have recently deployed, I call them kids, but most of them went to school from here, so I just wanted to say thank you for recognizing that. And in addition to that, we're gonna continue to work on honoring our veterans from this area more. We'd like to do some other things and build up a veterans memorial or something like that in Heartland. Also, I'd like to publicly say happy birthday to the Marine Corps today, and happy Veterans Day tomorrow. We will be hosting food and coffee for both all the veterans in the area that would like to stop in at Hidesight in Heartland, and that also goes for our first responders and the village board members, so. Also, we are gonna start taking donations for gift boxes for all the veterans that are deployed overseas. We're gonna take donations at Hidesight until the 21st of November, so, thank you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
250th, isn't it? Yeah. Anybody else that would like to speak in public comment? No one's on Zoom. Okay, first item, consideration of approval of minutes from the October 27th meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for October 27th, 2025.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Staying.
That motion is carried. Now, we have items related to the vouchers. We have a consideration of vouchers for payment in the amount of $1,249,052.8.
I make a motion to approve the vouchers in the amount of $1,249,052.8.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to pay the vouchers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now, we have items related to licenses and permits, consideration of a special event application for Holiday Train on December 10th, 2025. We have our rec director in the house.
Okay, so, Holiday Train is coming Wednesday, December 10th. We're looking to do exactly what we did last year. We do have Kiwanis and Epic Mortgage selling food again, so they are looking to have their fees waived for that vendor application for them to sell the food. The food collection is gonna start tomorrow with all the bins getting dropped off. Do you guys have anything you want to add?
No.
Road closed, two hours in advance.
Yeah, road's gonna close at 3:30 that day. Train's coming at 5:30. The performances will start at 5:45, and then it's scheduled to depart by 6:15.
Donate early.
And often.
Yeah, we're gonna, any donations we have, if we have a bunch, we're gonna take them to the food pantries earlier if there's a lot, just with everything, the economy right now with some people needing it, I know. Library has a food little donation thing outside their library right now that's getting used, so.
I'll talk about it more during announcements.
Perfect.
I'll make a motion that we approve the special event application for the Holiday Train December 10th, 2025.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the special event application for Holiday Train on December 10th. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now, we have discussion and consideration to increase field prep and rental fees. We have our couple members in the park board, but if you wanna fill us in on what we're looking at, or Sam, whoever would like to discuss it.
All right, so, I brought the, the, the application for our field and our reservations. We kinda changed it up last time, as far as just kind of making things easier, easier for our clerical staff and everything like that, making things less confusing for our user groups and stuff, and I was asked to take a look at the cost of our field preps and to see if that number should go up, so, the Excel sheet you have in front of you there kind of explains what our costs are, and I broke it down to our labor, chalk, paint, and they kinda put that there. I also additionally added the cost of our equipment, but those numbers are astronomical compared to what other municipalities are charging for a field prep. Called around and talked to a lot of the other communities, a lot of the other communities are charging about the same, a little more, some less, but they additionally don't have the base fee, so a lot of municipalities will have no base fee, or their base fee will be included within their prep. So, based on all the different communities and looking at the different, different amounts from the surrounding area and the numbers that I got and kinda the average I made of what it costs us to do a prep, park board voted on raising our large fields $10 per prep and $5 for our small baseball fields per prep, so, staff recommends making those changes.
One, one thing that I'll add is, when he has summer help doing the prep work, then the fees or the charges or the costs are significantly lower, and then, so that's actually at the beginning while they're still in school, and then at the end when they're back in school, then our, our full-time guys have to do it, but then, so that's why we didn't raise it to 20 bucks, we just kept, we raised it at 10, so, and then also, a lot of the municipalities, like he said, combined the rental, the field reservation and the prep at the same time, so, we're, we're kinda divided it up a little bit.
Correct, yeah, and I would say the majority is our summer help doing the, the preps, it's just those times, like he, Tim was saying, it's in the beginning of the year before we get the college students and towards the end of the year, the end of the season, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the increase of field prep and rental fees.
Second? Ben moved and seconded to approve the increase in field prep and rental fees, as was sent to the village board by the park board. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, we have other items for consideration, I'm just gonna give the board a heads, the heads up. With all of the things being on the agenda, people don't have to do it, but I'll be requesting that, we do have an appointment going to the plan commission, and, and they are here. I'm gonna get to the next item, but then I'll be kind of, I'm gonna ask that we get a suspension of rules so that we can move an item on the agenda, as opposed to having him sit through the budget, which he's more than welcome to sit through if he'd like to, but at least offering the option. So, okay, we'll do that. I'll request that we do it now. If, if someone's willing to make a motion to suspend the rules, and then we would have to have a motion to move that item.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to suspend our rules. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried.
I will make a motion that we move item number eight to next on the agenda as, I guess, item number five.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to move item eight up on the agenda, which we will take up now, so, with that, we are on that item, which is, all right, did I take the vote? All in favor of moving that item up on the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion carries. This is a consideration of appointment of Mike Dematte to the Joint Architectural Board and Plan Commission by myself, village president. I've talked with Mike, Mike Spenn, I think many people that at least live around the area on this side of town see Mike walking all the time, or downtown, walking all the time, visiting the businesses in Heartland. He seems to have a good outlook. I think he's gonna be outstanding on the plan commission, helping us as we continue to not only hold on to things that we wanna hold on to when it comes to the structure of our village, but he'll also be helpful, you know, as we look to the future and do those sort of things. I've sat down and talked with Mike, he seems to have my own same vision and some ideas of his own, obviously. There was a brief bio up there, if anybody on the board, or, Mike, if you wanna address the board, you can, feel free to do so, and if the board members obviously have questions for you, they're more than welcome to ask.
First of all, thank you for now the... Meeting of the Board. I know a lot of the trustees and have lived in this village for about 13 years now, I think 13, and really become attached to it. This is really one of the finest places, I think, in the United States, really a well-run, beautiful village, and I just wanna be a part of that, so, I am pro-growth, but only if it makes sense and is in keeping with the character of the community, that kinda thing, and I think I'm aligned with Jeff on that and other board members who I've spoken to, I haven't met everybody, but, you know, I just wanna do the right thing for the right community, so, I appreciate your consideration, and thank you.
Mike, if you could, just for the record, I didn't include it on here, I know, we already know it, could you just state your address?
Hosting food and coffee for both all the veterans in the area that would like to stop in at Hyde Site in Heartland. And that also goes for our first responders and the village board members. So also, we are gonna start taking donations for gift boxes for all the veterans that are deployed overseas. We're gonna take donations at Hyde Site until the 21st of November. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Two hundred and fiftieth, isn't it? Yeah. Anybody else that would like to speak in public comment? No one's on Zoom. Okay. First item, consideration of approval of minutes from the October 27th meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for October 27th, 2025.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Staying.
That motion is carried. Now, we have items related to the vouchers. We have a consideration of vouchers for payment in the amount of $1,249,052.8.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers in the amount of $1,249,052.8.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pay the vouchers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now, we have items related to licenses and permits. Consideration of a special event application for Holiday Train on December 10th, 2025. We have our rec director in the house.
Okay. So, Holiday Train is coming Wednesday, December 10th. We're looking to do exactly what we did last year. We do have Kewanis and Epic Mortgage selling food again, so they are looking to have their fees waived for that vendor application for them to sell the food. The food collection is gonna start tomorrow with all the bins getting dropped off. Do you guys have anything you want to add?
No.
Road closed, two hours in advance.
Yeah, road's gonna close at 3:30 that day. Train's coming at 5:30. The performances will start at 5:45, and then it's scheduled to depart by 6:15.
Donate early.
Often.
Yeah, we're gonna, any donations we have, if we have a bunch, we're gonna take them to the food pantries earlier if there's a lot. Just with everything, the economy right now with some people needing it. I know library has a food little donation thing outside their library right now that's getting used, so.
I'll talk about it more during announcements.
Perfect.
I'll make a motion that we approve the special event application for the Holiday Train, December 10th, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the special event application for Holiday Train on December 10th. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now, we have discussion and consideration to increase field prep and rental fees. We have our couple members in the park board, but if you wanna fill us in on what we're looking at, or Sam, whoever would like to discuss it.
All right. So, I brought the, the, uh, the application for our field and our reservations. We kinda changed it up last time as far as just kind of making things easier, easier for our clerical staff and everything like that, making things less confusing for our user groups and stuff. And I was asked to take a look at the cost of our field preps and to see if that number should go up. So, the Excel sheet you have in front of you there kind of explains what our costs are, and I broke it down to our labor, chalk, paint, and they kinda put that there. I also additionally added the cost of our equipment, but those numbers are astronomical compared to what other municipalities are charging for a field prep. Called around and talked to a lot of the other communities. A lot of the other communities are charging about the same, a little more, some less, but they additionally don't have the base fee. So, a lot of municipalities will have no base fee, or their base fee will be included within their prep. So, based on all the different communities and looking at the different, different amounts from the surrounding area and the numbers that I got and kinda the average I made of what it costs us to do a prep. Park Board voted on raising our large fields $10 per prep and $5 for our small baseball fields per prep. So, staff recommends making those changes.
One, one thing that I'll add is when he has summer help doing the prep work, then the fees or the charges or the costs are significantly lower. And then, so that's actually at the beginning while they're still in school, and then at the end when they're back in school, then our, our full-time guys have to do it. But then, so that's why we didn't raise it the 20 bucks. We just kept, we raised it at 10. So, and then also, a lot of the municipalities, like he said, combined the rental, the field reservation and the prep at the same time. So, we're, we're kinda divided it up a little bit.
Correct, yeah. And then, I, I would say the majority is our summer help doing the, the preps. It's just those times, like he, Tim was saying, it's in the beginning of the year before we get the college students and towards the end of the year, the end of the season, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the increase of field prep and rental fees.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the increase in field prep and rental fees, as was sent to the village board by the park board. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Okay. We have other items for consideration. I'm just gonna give the board a heads, the heads up. With all of the things being on the agenda, people don't have to do it, but I'll be requesting that, uh, we do have an appointment going to the plan commission, and, and they are here. I'm gonna get through the next item, but then I'll be kind of, I'm gonna ask that we get a suspension of rules so that we can move an item on the agenda, as opposed to having him sit through the budget, which he's more than welcome to sit through if he'd like to, but at least offering the option. So, okay, we'll do that. I'll request that we do it now. If, if someone's willing to make a motion to suspend the rules, and then we would have to have a motion to move that item.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend our rules. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried.
I will make a motion that we move item number eight to next on the agenda as, I guess, item number five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move item eight up on the agenda, which we will take up now. So, with that, we are on that item, which is, uh, all right, did I take the vote? All in favor of moving that item up on the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion carries. This is a consideration of appointment of Mike Demet to the Joint Architectural Board and Plan Commission by myself, village president. I've talked with Mike, Mike Spenn, I think many people that at least live around the area on this side of town see Mike walking all the time, or downtown, walking all the time, visiting the businesses in Heartland. He seems to have a good outlook. I think he's gonna be outstanding on the plan commission, helping us as we continue to not only hold on to things that we wanna hold on to when it comes to the structure of our village, but will also be helpful, you know, as we look to the future and do those sort of things. I've sat down and talked with Mike. He seems to have my own same vision and some ideas of his own, obviously. There was a brief bio up there. If anybody on the board, or Mike, if you wanna address the board, you can. Feel free to do so, and if the board members obviously have questions for you, they're more than welcome to ask.
First of all, thank you for now the. Meeting of the board. I know a lot of the trustees and have lived in this village for about 13 years now, I think 13, and really become attached to it. This is really one of the finest places, I think, in the United States. Really a well-run, beautiful village, and I just wanna be a part of that. So, I am pro-growth, but only if it makes sense and is in keeping with the character of the community, that kinda thing. And I think I'm aligned with Jeff on that and other board members who I've spoken to. I haven't met everybody, but, uh, you know, I just wanna do the right thing for the right community. So, I appreciate your consideration, and thank you.
Mike, if you could, just for the record, I didn't include it on here. I know we already know it. Could you just state your address?
Sure.
It just wasn't in the packet.
733 East Capital.
Thank you. If anybody has any questions.
Yeah, does anybody have any questions?
This would be filling a vacancy.
I think it's a great appointment. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the appointment of Mike Demet, Demet to the Joint Architectural Board and Plan Commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the appointment of Mike Demet to the Joint Architectural Board and Plan Commission. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. We will see you next Monday at 6:30. Same place, same time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, no, we have a discussion, we're going back to what was, what is five now. Discussion and consideration of the Resolution 810, 2025, a resolution approving the sewer utility rate effective first quarter of 2026.
So, this is in the budget. It's annually in the budget instead of doing large increases. The overall increase is going from $8.78 per thousand gallons to $9.22, or a raise of about $8 a quarter for an average household.
Ryan, is that amount comparable to what we've been doing?
We've done 5% every year since I've been here, yes. The sewer, like the physical dollar amount? Yeah.
I meant the percentage.
Yep.
It just seemed like a big jump to me, but.
No, 5% for sewer, we've done that every year. Everything with our sewer, Tom, can, can vouches gotten way more expensive.
Did we, when you and I first started, did we not have raises for like four or five years?
We didn't have, so they stopped doing sewer raises, and that closed the gap. Same thing with the water raise. They didn't have a water increase.
And then we had to have a big one, right?
We had to have a large water increase. We never did a large sewer increase.
Water, okay. Okay.
So, I'm trying to avoid any large sewer increase by just doing 5% a year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 1110, 2025, resolution approving the sewer utility rate effective first quarter, 2026. Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 1110, 2025, the resolution approving the sewer utility rate effective first quarter, 2026. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. As we do annually, we will go through these. You guys know what's coming up, but we will have a consideration of these items. These are related to the 2026 village budget as shown on Tab 1, Page 8, and Tab 31, Page 1 and 2 of the 2026 budget book. All information after Tab 1 is for informational purposes only. These figures may be modified by the village board during final consideration at this meeting. Each one of these items, when we get there, it's, as stated on the agenda, this is one time a year when we get a lot of roll call votes, but each one of these need a, a roll call vote, unless the board sees otherwise, we have an item A on the, on the agenda to discuss the 26 budget, 2026 budget. The reason for that is in case anybody wanted any changes, so we will bring up that item on discussion of the 2026 budget.
Real quick, I just wanna bring up what has changed since our budget presentation. We got all of our state aid revenues back. Those are all in the, in the area of where they were, so there's no change there. The only thing I ran through was that, uh, we do pay for performance. We don't do a cost of living. So, on average, staff will have, will see a 3% pay increase, run through that budget. As you know, we're a union contract. Our police union has asked for a 4% increase. That's quite low. Most unions are higher, but we've always given them raises when times were great, and when times are good, they've taken a little less than some of the neighboring communities. So, that'll be a 4% for the union and then 3% average for the police, or for administration, all staff except union. It's not a guaranteed three, it's a, it's a range.
Can I try that?
Yeah, go ahead.
One of the things that I always like to include, because it was, it's been a switch for the village, but some of us that have been here for a while have seen it. It used to be opposite of how we do it now. It used to be that department heads would kinda go to their department and just say, whatever the village board says, that's what everybody's getting across the board. Now, we might approve whatever that percentage is, that's a certain amount, but the department heads go, and if someone is doing an outstanding job and someone's doing average or slightly below average, our department heads are allowed to make those decisions so that they're properly giving out those raises. Does that make sense? But we've been doing that for quite some years, but I think it's a, I think it's a much better way to reward those that are really, you know, really doing an outstanding job. And also, still, you're getting a decent raise if you're doing an average job, and people will fall within those. Any other discussion? Okay. So, if there's no changes, the tabs, as we go through these, I'll just get started. First one, we have consideration of a motion to approve the 2026 municipal general fund budget in the amount of $9,974,076, shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2026 budget book.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2026 municipal general fund budget in the amount of $9,974,076, shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 26 budget books.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee DeBoer. Yay. Tretschel?
Yay.
Pfeifer?
Yay.
Walsh Leger?
Yay.
Connor?
Yay.
Holquist?
Yay.
President Fannerstill.
Yay. That motion passes unanimously. Now, we have consideration of a motion to approve the 2026 water utility budget in the amount of $2,325,752, shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2026 budget book.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2026 water utility budget in the amount of $2,325,752, shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2026 budget book.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2026 water utility budget in the amount of $2,325,752, shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2026 budget book. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee DeBoer.
Yay.
Tretschel?
Yay.
Pfeifer?
Yay.
Walsh Leger?
Yay.
Connor?
Yay.
Holquist?
Yay.
President Fannerstill.
Yay. That motion passes unanimously. Now, we have consideration of a motion to approve the 2026 sewer utility budget in the amount of $2,264,679, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2026 budget book.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2026 sewer utility budget in the amount of $2,264,679, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2026 budget book. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2026 sewer utility budget in the amount of $2,264,679, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2026 budget book. Any discussion? A roll call vote, please.
Trustee DeBoer.
Yay.
Tretschel?
Yay.
Pfeifer?
Yay.
Walsh Leger?
Yay.
Connor?
Yay.
Holquist?
Yay.
President Fannerstill.
Yay. That passes unanimously. Now, we have consideration of a motion to approve the 2026 TIF number four budget in the.
Staying.
In, in the amount of $328, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2026 budget book.
Hold on. Did we do the? I'll make a motion to approve the 2026 TIF number four budget in the amount of $328, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2026 budget book.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2026 TIF four budget in the amount of $328, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2026 budget book. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee DeBoer.
Yay.
Tretschel?
Yay.
Pfeifer?
Yay.
Walsh Leger?
Yay.
Connor?
Yay.
Holquist?
Yay.
President Fannerstill.
Yay. That passes unanimously. Now, we have consideration of a motion to approve the 2026 TIF number six budget in the amount of $128,128, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2026 budget book.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2026 TIF number six budget in the amount of $128,128, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2026 budget book.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2026 TIF number six budget in the amount of $128,128, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2026 budget book. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee DeBoer.
Yay.
Tretschel?
Yay.
Pfeifer?
Yay.
Walsh Leger?
Yay.
Connor?
Yay.
Holquist?
Yay.
President Fannerstill.
Yay. That passes unanimously. Now, we have consideration of a motion to approve the 2026 TIF number seven budget in the amount of $18,000, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2026 budget book.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2026 TIF number seven budget in the amount of $18,000, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2026 budget book.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Right, with that, I'll call a roll call for the consideration of the budget for TIF number seven.
Trustee DeBoer.
Yay.
Tretschel?
Yay.
Pfeifer?
Yay.
Walsh Leger?
Yay.
Connor?
Yay.
Holquist?
Yay.
President Fannerstill.
Yay. That passes unanimously. Now, we have consideration of a motion to approve the 2026 debt service budget in the amount of $2,304,977, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2026 budget book.
Make a motion to approve the 2026 debt service budget in the amount of $2,304,977, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2026 budget book.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the debt service budget. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee DeBoer.
Yay.
Tretschel?
Yay.
Pfeifer?
Yay.
Walsh Leger?
Yay.
Connor?
Yay.
Holquist?
Yay.
President Fannerstill.
Yay. That passes unanimously. We're almost there, guys. Now, we have consideration of a motion to approve the 2026 capital improvement impact fee and special revenue and other funds in the amount of $4,029,670, for a total village expenditure budget in the amount of $21,45,610.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2026 capital improvements impact fee and special revenue and other funds in the amount of $4,029,670, for a total village expenditure budget in the amount of $21,45,610.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee DeBoer.
Yay.
Tretschel?
Yay.
Pfeifer?
Yay.
Walsh Leger?
Yay.
Connor?
Yay.
Holquist?
Yay.
President Fannerstill.
Yay. That passes unanimously. This will be a standard vote on this one unless someone asks for a roll call vote. We have a consideration of a motion to authorize a downtown business improvement district tax assessment of $74,800, as requested by the business improvement district board.
Make a motion to authorize a downtown business improvement district tax assessment of $74,800, as requested by the bid board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that $74,800 bid budget or tax assessment, I'm sorry. Any discussion?
Just a reminder, that is the bid taxing the businesses downtown that help run the bid. It does not go to any residential, it just goes to all the businesses that are within the boundary.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now, we have consideration of a motion to approve the property tax levy in the amount of $7,392,828.
I'll make a motion to approve the property tax levy in the amount of $7,392,828. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the property tax levy in the amount of $7,392,828. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is, uh, this is one you guys always ask about. This'll raise the tax rate from $3.85 to $3.88. It'll be a 3 cent per thousand increase, a $300,000 home will see less than a $9 increase for the year.
What's the percent? Isn't it like .08%?
Yeah. Boy, you put me on the spot. Man.
You knew I was gonna ask.
Less than, it's 7 one-hundredths of a percent.
Okay. So, we're looking at .07 or .08%.
And that's because.
That's not just taking the decimal where .07 would be 7%. This is 70% of 1%. And the reason I wanna say that is, you guys will get questions as we do every year, so we're only doing that small increase, which is just under 1%. When the tax bills come out, don't just look at your tax bill and say, "Heartland raised this." What are they talking about? It's only 1% because you're gonna see a line for Arrowhead schools. If you live in Lake Country or Heartland Lakeside School District, you're only gonna have one or the other. That's gonna be a line. When you see WCTC, that's Waukesha County Technical College, that's a line. When you see Waukesha County, that's the county, that's a line. And then, a portion of the entire portion that you pay when you get your tax bill, because we put it all into one, we send it to the county, they send the bills out for us, all of those entities send those. But a lot of times, people think because it's coming from Heartland, Heartland's just raising your taxes. Pay close attention to those bills this year because it will be very important. Ours is hardly going up. Nothing. But there will be others that are going up substantially. So, that's why I wanna stress it. Any other discussion on this tax levy? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee DeBoer. Tretschel?
Yay.
Pfeifer?
Yay.
Walsh Leger?
Yay.
Connor?
Yay.
Holquist?
Yay.
Yay.
President Fannerstill.
Yay. That passes unanimously.
Now we have a consideration of a motion to approve the 2026 payroll matrix slash job classification list on tab thirty-one, page one and two. This has been in the book. It's something I talked to Ryan about. I'll allow him to touch on it. I think it's important to touch on, just touch on this and what it is, because if someone didn't know, they wouldn't know. But I think it's important to touch on.
Yeah, I cleaned it up. Previously, we had pay grades one through twelve, and it just kind of everybody fit in it. Now it's, you'll see by department, we have all the positions. So when you physically look, it'll be very easy to go to each department, look up and see what that is. The obvious ones that are different, the police union and the police officers and detectives are union contract, and I myself am a contract. But it lists, it shows all the pay ranges by department. I think it'll be a little easier for everyone in the public and the board members to look at and see.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2026 payroll matrix slash job classification list on tab thirty-one, page one and two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2026 payroll matrix job classification list on tab thirty-one, page one and two of the budget book. I think of the budget book, correct?
Hmm?
Yeah. Any discussion? This would require a roll call vote. Well, I'll call the question with the roll call vote.
Trustee DeBoer.
Yay.
Trechel.
Yay.
Pfeiffer.
Yay.
Walsh-Lager.
Yay.
Connor.
Yay.
Holquist.
Yay.
President Fannerstill.
Yay. That passes unanimously.
So yeah, real quick, now that it is approved, I will put together the full budget, which is a couple hundred pages. I'll get it on the website in the next couple days. You'll get a paper budget. Everyone else will get electronic. Unless you want a paper budget, please let me know. So.
All right. Budget stuff. Uh, now we have discussion and consideration of police department request to order two squads in 2025 that are budgeting, budgeted for, for 2026. Chief?
Thank you. So this is a customary thing we do every time we order new squads. This allows us to put this purchase in. Basically tomorrow, I contact our vendor on the state bid and say we are moving forward with those squads. If approved by the board, this was approved in that budget that you just approved. It's just given me the authority to order them now. Kind of tying in our purchasing policy of anything over fifteen thousand dollars, since I don't have technically approval till 2026, for you to allow me to place the order now, they would not be paid for till we receive them in 2026. So we lock in this year's pricing that we consulted for. But then, as you all are aware, it takes many months for these vehicles to come off the production line and for us to get them. So the earlier we order them, the earlier we get them to then make those replacements. The lead time's not, hasn't been as bad as we were seeing during like the COVID time, but it still is several months.
We had a public work truck we bought in '23 that we just got this last month.
Wow. And they're still tilting it.
We're still putting it together?
It's just the chassis we got.
Okay.
They thought they'd put the actual bed and everything on.
So that took two years.
Is that that large? It was like six or seven cubic foot dump truck?
It's like a normal dump.
That's that, that was a while ago.
Yeah. But your squad, when did you get your, we're hoping probably April, May?
So two years ago was about November. So it took about a year from putting in order when that budget was approved to get in them. And then last year, I think we got March. So it was quite a bit sooner, but still that was five, six months lead time.
The other reason you guys do this is because obviously if we wait till '26, there's a price increase. So he gets it in now before any price increase so that we get it at this year's cost.
And they don't bill us till we take receipt of the vehicle. So we will not pay this cost till 2026 with the approved budget.
I make a motion to approve the police department's request for two squads in 2025 that are budgeted, budgeted for in 2026.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordering the two police squads and paying for them when they show up, but they're going in the 2026 budget. Any discussion? Chief, I had a question. If you could just touch on for the board or the public.
Absolutely.
And I, sorry, I didn't email you or anything to say, hey, I'm gonna ask this. But if you could just touch on the vehicles we're replacing, what's our turn time on the vehicles? How much have they been used? What are they sitting at, if you know?
So typically, we have, um, these are main patrol squads. So those mark patrol squads that you see driving around, those run 24/7. We have four of them. So squads one, two, three, four. Um, this will be replacing, I believe, squads two and four. Um, we replace every two years, basically, one and three, and then two and four, one and three, two and four. So it's on a four-year replacement cycle for the squad car itself. And then we're usually on the low end, probably in those mid to upper eighty thousand miles. And then on the high end, just over a hundred thousand miles on the car. Again, um, those are, I would call rougher miles in the sense that we do have to leave the cars idling for time. We have a lot of electronics rolling. So if we leave those cars with all the electronics going, sometimes they don't start for us then if we do that for a prolonged period of time. So that's why if you see a squad car running, there's a feature that we could turn it on without the key, it won't do anything. It just runs the engine. You can't drive it in that fashion. But it keeps it so all our electronics do run. And we got a lot of different electronics from the squad cameras to the computers, the lights, everything that's running in them eats a lot of juice.
And you feel comfortable with that four-year turn time where we have a vehicle for four years? That's working out good?
Yeah, I'd say for the most part, it's very good. Um, you, there's always, one year, I think we had a transmission goal, but that could have, that could happen anytime.
Tom got a car this year, and it was the car's fifth year. Did the transmission go?
No, just a line.
Just a line?
Yeah, we had to replace a line. I pulled it into the parking lot and it wasn't going anywhere.
So four years seems pretty good.
Yeah, I would say I wouldn't want to push it more. Uh, some of these cars that we get rid of, we start chasing wiring issues. And those are the kind of things that you think you fix till you find out you didn't fix. And it just never seems to get better.
Then I, I think like DBW, we do auction those off, right?
Yeah, everything goes on the auction site unless Tom keeps it.
That's an important part to note, Tim, though, because that's one thing a lot of boards, school boards and other things, they don't talk about what happens to the equipment once it's done with. But it's, you know, village property. So how was that exit from the system? And the, that site does a great.
And even with the mileage on it, we do fairly well on this auction site with the SUVs. If you remember back when we had Crown Vics, those weren't, those didn't sell so well. Um, those you were almost giving away. But the Explorer package does get decent resale for the amount of miles and the wear and tear on the vehicle. And as you see, we rip all that stuff out of it. So there's holes in the interior and decals ripped off. So, um, people are still willing to pay for them. But I, if you look at car prices, that's probably why right now.
Hey, Chief.
Yes?
What, uh, average, when we wholesale the cars, what, what's the values you get out of them on an average?
I was gonna say ten to fifteen thousand on the SUV. And that, that ranges, so like those four cars that, the, two of which we're replacing now are on that four-year cycle. But there's other cars, like our detective car, we run that one for eight years. So maybe that gets a little less. So there is a little bit of wiggle room in there. But those main four cars that run 24/7, we're getting about that ten to fifteen thousand-ish.
Yeah, that's a good, pretty good ROI with that much usage on it.
Yep.
Any outs for discussion? All in favor of allowing the purchase of the two squads in 2025 for the 2026 budget? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have discussion and consideration regarding registered sex offender residency restriction. This has been going on for a little bit. Gave people some time to look at some things. It was time, I thought, to, uh, I think we all thought, I shouldn't say, not just me. But just to take a look at this again, I think it's good that we do this periodically, you know, every two or three years. Um, so we've been looking at it. Not sure what you guys are thinking, but I think it's time to, uh, I think it's time to broaden the base a little bit. So, yeah.
I personally, after reviewing the maps and, and talking to a lot of folks around the village, especially some that were recently affected, it gave us, gives us another opportunity to kind of look at the map and revisit this. I know it has been a bit, a bit since we put this in place. I'd love to, I'd love to see it go out over a thousand, even to that 1250 mark. Um, I'd, I'd be curious what the rest of the board feels, but I think that 1,250 feet is, it's out there a little bit, but I think it's a, a good-looking map. And I think it still allows for residency in just about every part of the village.
Yeah, just, you know, tonight, I think what we're looking for is you guys to direct us to bring back the ordinance to go through the readings, change the footage. And it takes three readings to update the ordinance on the sex offender residency requirements. So we're not looking for a feat today, per se, but we will bring that forward with maps. At that time, you guys will do it.
I think it's important to note that we did have a school that went out. So we have a lot of properties that are online now that are available to move in. Even if we did go up to 1250, it doesn't affect my house because I'm so far from a school. Now there used to be Zion School. There's quite a few houses within that range that people were not able to move into that now are open for people to move into. And with that being the case, I would like to see us go to 1250.
Did, did we, did we have a, a, kind of look at what I'd asked of every, going from 750 to a thousand and so forth, what we lose, um, in availability percentage-wise or anything?
Yeah, we got a quote for $3,000 from our engineering firm to go through all the properties and do that. So we decided not to.
Well, I think Rick was gonna pay for that.
We, we did get the maps, though. Did, did you?
We have maps, yes.
Did you get the maps, Rick, that at least kind of show it, even though it doesn't have the percentages?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
So the hard part is trying to go into those apartments or multifamily and deciphering how many it hits, how many are in there, how many it doesn't. So if you wanted an accurate count, that would be the only way. Otherwise, a single family would count as one and a multifamily would count as one. So, um, just based off of the Zion opening up, that creates a whole swath that does kind of open it, hence the desire, I think, of the board to increase that, the footage.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I'd be in favor of expanding it to 1250 as well.
Rick, did you have, I didn't mean to cut you off either. Did you mean, did you have anything else?
No, no, I'm, I'm good with going 1250 or expanding it out a little bit. I just thought if there was detail. But yeah, for $3,000, that's not worth that time and effort.
Right.
So I think we're just looking for a motion to, um, bring the ordinance back to the next village board meeting and for the board to go through the readings to update the square footage to the board's desired spec.
I will make that motion. I make a motion that we bring back the ordinance to the village board for us to update, modify, and go through the three readings process.
Second.
Uh, it's been, it's been moved and seconded to bring, um, I don't have the ordinance number, but that's okay, the sex offender residency restriction ordinance back to the village board so that we can go through that. And I do, it's important to note, even though we're talking about numbers, that they could change on reading one and change again on reading two and change again on reading three and then be a final, you know. So there is, um, but I do encourage everyone to, if questions pop up, contact the village and the village will get you. If you need to contact Rooker and Milky or whoever, I want you to know you're afforded that right, especially in the positions you're in. If there's information, and Rick, I'm saying this to you also, if there's information you want, I mean, you are, you don't have to just sit and wait for it to come. If there's something you want to know, contact the village, get hold of Ryan or Chief or one or the other, but say, hey, I want this information, and they'll do everything. Or they'll say it's gonna cost this much. You might want to take it to the board to get that info.
Is there footage that the first draft should have on it or?
I would start there. It's been suggested. So I mean, I would start there and then we can change if we want to. But that's what I would put on. Yep.
Also possibly get a map that's a little bigger. I can't read anything on this one. And I'd like to be able to at least see what areas.
Tom, would you be able to run that through the plotter? Are you able to use something that they do on PDF and run it through the plotter?
I can make that on Ledger eleven by seventeen or.
Is that gonna be big enough? Isn't that what you have?
Is that bigger than this? Yes. Okay.
This is bigger than this.
That's eleven seventeen.
I can split it up and kind of make multiple full prints of that.
Would that work in?
Yeah, I just, I can't see it well enough.
He would chop it up so you'd have more pages.
No, that's fine. No, that's fine.
Thanks, Tom. Uh, we have a motion on the floor, correct?
Yep.
Trustee Holquist, anything you wanted to add? You're good?
Yeah, I'm fine. I, I think we're all in agreement that, uh, as far as possible is great as long as we don't open ourselves up to a lawsuit. So.
All right, I'll, I'll call the question with that being the case. I'll call the question that this will be brought back to the board for us to start, you know, looking at it and, and doing things with it. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now we have announcements.
I'll start since I got the microphone. Um, I mentioned last time we were submitting for a body worn camera grant that has been submitted. So now we wait to see if our application is selected out of all the police departments in the country. So we'll see how that goes. And I will definitely keep the board, uh, in the know on where we are with that once I hear something back. It is the federal government, so don't hold your breath. We're doing the Stuff the Squad event. So that will be at the Piggly Wiggly. That's for the holiday food train, food drive. We'll have an actual event there with squad cars and officers on December 4th. But the food drive will remain in place at the Piggly Wiggly. We, we figured, let's go where the food is. And we got a couple bins out there, and anyone can donate at any time from the pig. November 14th, we start up, end of this week through the train, December 10th. And then the last thing I want to mention is we do have our annual administrative committee meeting for Lake Country Municipal Court. That'll be on Wednesday. That's when all the different municipalities have representatives vote. And the biggest piece of that is the annual budget. So as you recall, the Lake Country Court, we have about 20 or so different municipalities that belong to that joint court. And it's totally funded off the costs that are retrieved from the citations that are issued and heard in front of the court. There is no actual municipal one that goes to, towards paying the court right now. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Chief. For the fire department, um, last month, we had 85 calls for service, which was a little bit lower than our last year's call volume. But we've already stepped into November pretty heated, I guess, was, we should say, with our first call being a structured fire for our thousandth call for the, for the year so far. Uh, we're at 26 calls for November. We just finished up our annual pump and maintenance, um, this week. They have a couple minor repairs that they have to do next week on the rigs. But besides that, um, everything is up and operational on that side of it. Minus Med 43, our newer ambulance, we've had probably the fifth coil pack go out in it now again. So that's going in for service on Wednesday to get repaired. And then from that point, uh, we have a full-time applicant interview with the PFC tomorrow. Um, he's gonna be interviewing virtually just because he lives out of state. But he'll be, um, he'll be jumping in along with a couple other candidates for part-time. And lastly, we just started our officer promotional process, our internal officer promotional process, uh, to fill assistant chief position and to lieutenants.
All right, uh, if you don't know already, Highway 83 is finally open. So, yeah. Um, the, uh, yes, yes, there we go. All right.
And the stoplights work.
Stoplights are on.
I think. I haven't driven through them yet.
They were open at nine o'clock this morning.
They were not, they.
It wasn't open at 11 o'clock this morning.
Yeah, there was a meeting at, I was sat on at 11 o'clock today, and they were just starting to move all the barricades and stuff. There's still barricades and barrels out. I drove that direction before this meeting. So check the road out. So it's open. Leaf pickup is, uh, still going on around the village. We had a lot come down this last weekend with some of the colder temps today and the wind. Um, just a reminder to keep everything into the gutter line. If it's on the terrace, we can't reach it with those leaf backs because there's only a certain extension on that, um, hose or wand that reaches out. No sticks, branches, pumpkins, rocks.
Pumpkins.
Landscape material and stuff like that. Because inside there, there is a giant grinding wheel. And if we hit any of that stuff, it's not good for our equipment. And we just purchased one of those, and they're not cheap. So please do not put any of those items inside there. We are going through our annual performance evaluations, kind of like Jeff was talking earlier, kind of with our raises, you know. Um, so we're working through that right now as far as our, our management staff. Um, we're getting ready for, uh, Heartland Lights and getting the bins out, uh, for donations for the food pantries. So we'll be doing that tomorrow. And then, uh, November 25th is the last day for yard waste collection at our DPW shop. So the end of this month is the kind of end of yard waste. So we still have, um, uh, tomorrow, this Friday, and then next weekend, and then one last Tuesday, and then we're done for yard waste at the DPW shop. So that's all I have.
Uh, we already talked about the holiday train. So I'll just mention the Heartland Lights is on Friday, December 5th. We'll be with the library, um, kind of helping run the horse-tron carriage that evening.
We're gonna unofficially be the, what, warming area, I guess you could call it. And there'll be some Sugar Plum Fairies, uh, that will be performing for anyone who wants to see them. I forget the name of the organization that's helping us run it, but.
Wisconsin Dance Conservatory.
That one. Ryan also touched on it earlier, but we have kind of three donation drives going on right now. The first is Holiday Train. We have our bin up at the front of the library. We also have a little free library along the Ice Age Trail that we converted to a little free pantry. Anyone can come and use it as they need. And you can also donate any unexpired and unopened, non-perishable food items. It has seen significant use so far. And we're doing our annual giving tree again for the third year in a row, raising, um, well, not raising, but getting donations for haws in Waukesha and several Heartland North families that were working with them right now. So that will, we have the tree up already at the library. Hopefully, the ornaments out next week. That's gonna run through December 17th.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to the residents that came in and voiced their concerns. Um, I too agree with. I hear you. Thank you.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Well, it's on the floor, so I have to take it up, but I'll do it during discussion. We have a motion, uh, to adjourn the meeting. Um, I'm gonna use discussion time to do the announcements. I'll try to talk fast. Tomorrow's Veterans Day. Um, there are things going on in Heartland. Um, I, I'm quite certain there's something going on at, um, the American Legion. I do know.
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty at the American Legion. Uh, it is the, uh, time of year where we also do the village managers review. The board does the village manager review. So those of you that are department heads may be getting questions. Uh, I know one of the things that I call and ask is just saying, have you guys done reviews for all of your people? Or one is a getting done, that kind of thing. Um, but just so everybody knows, we do an annual review. There's a whole process we have to, to the rest of the board. I'm just hoping that we can have those back. They were all sent out. If you didn't have it, ask them, they'll resend them. But if I could have them back by the end of the month so that we can be good to go for the first so that we can be good to go for the first meeting in December. Um, we have, uh, Heartland Lights to Light the Tree is on the 5th of December. So we're gonna very quickly get through November here, and we'll be right into, we'll get through Thanksgiving, which is a wonderful, wonderful time. Um, and we will get right into, uh, Heartland Lights and, and getting ready for Christmas. The holiday train is on the 10th. So sometimes they land on the same night. This year it's different, so just keep an eye on that. And then everybody knows that it's on, it's on different times. One of the things that I'd like to address at this time of year and also remind people of, even though DPW is gonna be closing down for yard waste, I don't know how many people know, so I'm just gonna keep on saying it, at the, at the GFL site, the first Tuesday of every month, you can take it and you got your garbage pickup, but you can take and load up a truck or a van or, or your car, if you have a couple pieces or whatever, and you can go to the site. And if you're a resident and you show residence, you can go and dispose of, I believe it's recycling and garbage, correct?
Just no yard waste.
No yard waste, but recycling and garbage. So when it's after Christmas and you have boxes sticking out of your recycle can, and you're like, I want to get rid of these because we only have two-week pickup, please spread the word, especially in the HOA. You can take those, and you, there is a place to at least dispose of it, or you can just wait for garbage pickup and kind of divvy it up. But wanted everybody to know that. Looking forward to a wonderful, um, Thanksgiving and Christmas season as we head towards the new year here. Lot going on in the village. Um, hopefully with all the talks of crosswalks and things like that, people be safe in all the things that they do, um, and that we just continue to have wonderful, um, run here. Go Arrowhead and go Pat Go. And Lake Country Lutheran is also on a run to state as well for football.
I'll second.
It's already, I think we had a motion to second anyway, so I'll call the question. Uh, all in favor of adjourning the meeting?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? This meeting's adjourned.